So, I welcome you to the 617 CBA hearing. This is a continuation from the 520 hearing. So we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's see. What do I introduce? We'll introduce all of us.
I'm Bob DeRosa, I'm an alternate.
Gary Anderson.
Teresa Bascom.
Terry Bonzer.
Bonnie Winona McKinnon.
Mary Colver.
Kevin Bassett, alternate.
Okay, so let me read you the rules. The chairperson shall call the hearing in a session to read the application. Each member of the board may ask questions at any point during the testimony. Each person who appears shall be required to state their name and address and indicate their affiliation with the case. Any board members through the chair may request a party to the case to speak a second time. Any party to the case who wants to ask a question of another party to the case must do so through the chairperson. The applicant shall be called to present their case and the abuders in favor shall be allowed to speak. The abuders in opposition shall be allowed to speak. The board will hear the evidence that pertains to the case from the other parties that wish to speak. The applicant and those in favor shall be allowed to speak in rebuttal. Those in opposition shall be allowed to speak in rebuttal. And then the hearing will be closed and we'll do our discussion and make our decision. So, let's see. Okay, so I'm gonna open the meeting.
Mr. Chair, you have an alternate to...
He's gonna appoint you.
Yeah, I'm gonna appoint my alternate now.
So I was not here last time?
Yeah, Mary's gonna be filling in because you're gonna recuse yourself, right?
Correct.
Okay, so you wanna do that first?
Want to...
I've opened the meeting and so you're gonna recuse yourself from this hearing, from this case.
Okay, so if this is the time you would like me to do that, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, you can do it now.
I'd like to recuse myself from this case due to a relationship with the applicant and family members.
So since you have a full board?
Oh, no.
I'm gonna leave?
Well...
Oh, that was terrible.
You're ahead now? Okay, so we should be good. Yeah, we got...okay.
Bye. Have a good night.
Okay, let me read. So, let me read the case. So this is...
We still need to seat Bob for Romeo.
Yeah, I gotta seat Bob, yep. Okay, so I'll seat you guys first. So, Mary was here the last meeting, she heard the whole, the 520 hearing, you were here, you sat on the case, you filled in for Gary, right? Yeah?
Yeah.
So you'll be filling in for Gary and I'll appoint Bob DeRosa to fill in for Romeo for this case as the board member. Okay, so this is case 25006 VA Brady, case 20, it's on 28 Case Road. Application from Dennis F. Brady and Matthew Brady requesting a variance from Article II, Section C2E, see definition of lot envelope of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit the subdivision of a lot with a lot envelope less than 50 feet wide, specifically 43 feet, .84 feet. The property is located at 28 Case Road in Nottingham in New Hampshire and is identified as tax map nine, Lot 2. Initial public hearing was on the 520 and has continued to 617. Okay, so you can, Peter, I wanna present you. You remember exactly what you said last time?
I hope not. For the record, Peter Landry, Landry Surveying, in attendance, Matthew Brady. He is the nephew of the landowner, Dennis Brady, and longtime resident, lifelong resident of Nottingham. Tonight, we're here to discuss relief of the zoning requirement that requires a 30,000 square foot lot envelope that does not narrow down any less than a 50-foot width. In this particular case, we have over 30,000 fit for building, lot envelope, but in one section, it does narrow down, as Mr. Bonzer said, to 43.8 where 50 feet is required. So we're about six feet short. As you, if the board members have looked at the plans that we supplied, you'll see that there's an existing dwelling on the lot, which is number 28 Case Road with the driveway coming in off of Case Road, positioned basically in the middle of the drawing that you're looking at. There's also an existing foundation somewhat northwest of the existing house, which is also shown on the proposed lot on the plans that are in front of you. Now, the main reason, or the reason we're here, is we have lots of land. We have 17 acres of land to start, we have 600 and some odd feet of frontage on Case Road, we had less than 200 frontage on Robin Hood Road, and last year we came here and received relief in the form of a variance for less than 200 feet of frontage. And then we started the job and found out that we were struggling to meet the requirement of the 30K because of the position of the existing dwelling, number 28, as you can see and as I mentioned. So, and again, we have 17 acres and in the configuration we're showing now, Matthew's proposed lot 2-1 has 31,000 and change contiguous, and the existing lot, or the existing house lot, has 54,000 square feet fit for building, whereas 30,000 is required for these conventional lots. So, to configure lot lines around the existing house and the existing lot lines, you can see the one area that we're looking for the relief does not, there's just not enough space to require or allow the 50-foot width that we're looking for. Now, there was some consideration of trying to create the hourglass instead of what I would call maybe a handle that we've got, or the 44-foot strip. We could've tried to jiggy-jog some lot lines around the existing house. That creates some other problems down the road because planning board likes to see 100-foot minimum lot lines. And again, we like to try to get square to rectangular shaped lots whenever possible, you know, when you can, because that's just, that's been the way of Nottingham for years, square or rectangular shaped lots. Within the package that I, and I know everybody except Mr. DeRosa was here last time, but if you've read the package that we gave, there were many examples in there of somewhat of the brief history of this bounce, 200 by 200 square, that they, that was, has been a requirement since creation of zoning, to how that has now become what we look, what was looked for on the plans on conventional lots as a 30,000 square foot fit for building area. So, back when, the examples that I put in, and I won't go over every one of them, but they're there just for you to somewhat see the brief history. The very first, some of the very first ones show it, the 200 by 200, which was intended to make sure that the lots, when they were created, were square. And you didn't have offset lots with weird angles that you end up building on the neighbor's lot because you don't know where the lot lines are. So that square was fit in there for that purpose. It wasn't fit in there to try to create a buildable area. As a matter of fact, if you took the 200 by 200, which used to be measured to the lot lines and to the edge of wet, but if you didn't have any wetland, if you had a perfect lot and you were to lay that down and took out the 50-foot building setbacks, you'd find out there's only 12,000 square foot of buildable area in the 200 by 200 square. That was the way it was and always was. Till the 80s, mid 80s, they then decided to give, because lots aren't always perfect with no slopes and no wetland, the planning board developed, well, geez, maybe we'll give the landowners another option, and they decided to allow a 200 by 200 square or a 60,000 square foot buildable area. And each of those was measured to the lot line and to the edge of wet, and that worked for a few years, decades or so. And then I think it was somewhere in the early 2000s, the planning board had again another change in the zoning, and I believe besides myself, there was one other board member, one other member of the town there to discuss the changes, which was at that point, they wanted to change the 60,000, which was on the books, measured to the lot lines, to be exclusive of the setbacks. So that really was a big hit. And they wanted the 60,000 to remain, and there were two members of their community who spoke up. My, I was one of them, and we, through a discussion with the board, we were able to, at that night, get it to the 30,000. That's, and that's probably 20 years ago. So, that's where we are, and that is the rule. And we're not here, I'm not here to complain about the rule, I know that's the rule. But we are asking for some relief of that rule. And the relief, again, based on the fact that if we've got plenty of land, but the position of that existing house is really the crux of why we're here. So, I did mention at the last meeting for most of you, you heard me say, and I don't wanna compare our town to all the others around here in Pottengill. This, the other towns around here, there isn't any other town that has a, as restrictive as we do. So as a comparison, we are very unique when it comes to fitting this three-quarters of an acre within a two-acre lot. It's a very restrictive and unique requirement. The only other closest regulation, subdivision regulation that I could find was Brentwood. And Brentwood has, requires on all their subdivision plans, a building block of 40 feet by 80 feet, rectangle, be shown somewhere on their two-acre lot within the setbacks to show that you could get a house or something in there. And I will point out that the strip of land that we're asking relief on is less than 50, but it's 44 feet, and you could fit a 40 by 80 rectangle in there. As a matter of fact, when you look at this area that we're looking for relief, it's really only on the 50-foot. The town allows septics to be 20 feet from the lot line, so that area that we're showing, that runs up the hill where we're asking for the relief, is really over 100 feet of buildable land in there when you include, when you add in the extra 30 feet on each side for the septic. So it's quite a large area. But the house has 43 feet, which my house is only 34, I could fit my house in that. And a lot of houses are like that in town. So, I wanted to just bring up one other comparison in town, and then I'll go through the five criteria for you. The one other thing I did wanna bring up is that on a conventional two-acre lot, 200-foot frontage, two acres, perfect world, the 30,000 mathematically will fit right in that configuration. And that is one type of lot in this town. Another type of lot in this town is an open space development lot, which by regulation, if you were starting out from scratch, the minimum lot size in a cluster, and this is, I'm specifically talking, not density, but specifically talking about buildable area, is a 30,000 square foot lot. Now, if you take the 30,000 square foot lot and you subtract the building setbacks, 35 in the front, 25 on the side, you end up with about 12,000 square feet that you have to put your house, required to put your house, your septic and your well and your driveway, all of your building improvements in that area. And we've got them all over town. So that's one type of lot, and that seems to be fine. The other type is this conventional, which very similar, larger, density's built into the lot, not in open space, and we need 30,000. So, seems a little unbalanced, but those are the rules, and I understand that. That's why we need a little bit of relief. I wanted to point out, I don't think I said it, it's in the, it's in my notes or may not be, I'm not 100% sure, but I mentioned the 12,000 for the open space, we have the 30,000, but if you were to not count the area that we're asking for relief, down, which is the lower area, which on the plan, you'll see where I've got the house and the septic and the well, that area is close to 22,000. So we're around 22,000 of 100% conforming towards the 30,000. The other percentage is just that sliver or handle, not so much an hourglass, although it could be a long-neck hourglass, I guess, but it doesn't bubble back out. We make the area that we need within that, that reduced 50-foot area. So I did wanna point that out, 12,000 square foot open space lots versus 30,000 conventional lots, same houses, okay. Now, let's go through the five criteria. So, number one, I guess I'll read the questions so that the answers fall into place, but number one asks, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. And again, this is a, the rural character of the area, of the existing neighborhood is in no way altered, or is in no way the general health, self, safety, or welfare of the public threatened or affected in any way by this application. So in this case, as I mentioned, slightly narrowing the required lot envelope does not have any adverse effect on the public interest. Seems pretty obvious. Number two, if the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. Again, you know, the purpose of the lot envelope is to supply adequate space, that's one purpose, there are others. But if the spirit of this ordinance is to create a buildable lot in the town with road frontage, which we have, then this ordinance is being observed. If the variance were granted, the outcome of the proposed new lot created would be similar of size and shape in keeping with the rural character of the town, and certainly in the area where there are mainly 15,000 to 20,000 square foot lots. So therefore, I, we believe that the, in this case, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. So, granting the variance would do substantial justice, and very much like I just mentioned as a comparison when it comes to the two different types of lots we have in town. We have the open space lots, reduced size because of open space requirements, and then we have the conventional lots. So, substantial justice, the more, there's more than enough buildable area for the improvements in the fact that there's 22,000 with 30 is required, to be placed on the three-acre lot. Now, why is it three-acre lot where two acres are required? We're in the Aquifer District and zoning requires an extra acre, so that's why we're three acres, which, again, that's a minimum lot for this area. Before the, just, again, the most recent 2025 zoning change we just had in March, before that, the 30K area included both the house and the septic. This latest change we had in March removed the requirement of having the septic in the 30K. It removed, I believe, the 200 by 200, no longer feeling that's necessary, and now the requirement is a 30K area just for the house. That's a three-quarters of an acre for a house. So, that's what we're dealing, that's the relief we're looking for. We feel 22,000's more than enough for a house, a septic, a well, garage, and such, lawn. So number four, the variance, if the variance is granted, the values of the surrounding property would not be diminished. Well, we're gonna be getting a new house put into the area, that usually doesn't diminish value. The property and the surrounding areas currently residential and agricultural use, allowing for single-family homes, which is how the applicant intends on using the proposed new lot. If the variance is granted and pending our planning board approval, the town has minimum codes to assure any new home is built to acceptable standards, additional zoning already in place to protect neighborhoods from junkyards, excessive farm animals, I've understood, and there's no evidence of this property would diminish any value of abutting properties. Okay? So, the fifth one, the unnecessary hardship. Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties, denial would be unnecessary hardship because, now again, I wanted you to point out that, as I mentioned at the opening, it's really the existing house position is what, is really the distinguishing feature from other properties. It's, it's location, six feet towards Case Road, and we wouldn't be here tonight. No fair or substantial relationship exists between the general public, purpose of the ordinance provisions, and the specific application of that provision to the property because the single-family dwelling location on the property limits the location of the proposed lot line, that's the existing house, when you maintain the required 50 feet up from the house. Therefore, within the proposed three-acre lot, a portion of the 30K lot envelope is less than the 50 feet. That's the hardship that is caused by the existing house. The proposed use is a reasonable one because, again, similar to the, the open space only requiring a 12K, this proposed lot is surrounded by properties, a single-family residential homes, average-sized lot, granted pre-existing at best, but, you know, the soils out there are fantastic, and the development that's surrounding this property, the lots are 10 to 15, maybe 20,000 at best. The entire 30K lot building envelope is not necessarily needed because there's sufficient area for the construction of all the necessary future improvements, and that can be seen on the plan that we gave. The topo plan specifically shows a proposed dwelling, the well, a 4,000 square foot septic reserve area, and if you know anything about the septic, your septic system will more than likely be less than 1,000 square feet. So that's showing four leach fields, the driveway, all in the well, all of the improvements fitting on here meeting all the requirements except for the additional 30K, which we're here for relief for. So, 5B explains how, if the criteria in sub-paragraph A is not established, okay, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only exist, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. The property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance. A variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. As, as mentioned, the location of the existing dwelling of Matthew's uncle limits the ability to place the proposed lot line in the location to provide each lot with the 30K that the town requires. It's not that we don't have it, we have it, it's just we're limited because of that position of that house. So at this point, you know, there's really no way to avoid the hourglass effect because of the house, or any, any particular point in that area that would be less than, I mean, we couldn't create anything more than 50 feet in that area. We're just bound to be less than 50 feet by six feet because of the position of that house. Now certainly, we could've looked at two other options, one I already briefly mentioned, and that could've been to try to reconfigure the lot line. It would've, wouldn't have, wouldn't have eliminated the hourglass, but it, we could've opened up the back, and it would've just been an exercise to show you that we could create an hourglass, and we're here for relief on that anyway. I didn't think that was gonna serve the purpose, and as I mentioned, it would more than likely create more choppy lines or more lot lines, some maybe being less than 100, which later on the planning board would require a waiver. And the second thought was, should I consider asking for a variance for the building setback? Okay, I, maybe I, maybe the thought would be, geez, should I go 44 feet, therefore being able to move the lot line over and getting the 30K? So it's sort of like, well, geez, which way do we go? And again, 50-foot, my reasoning was, whether it's right or wrong, it's my reasoning, was that the 50-foot setback has been in this existence from the beginning, and it's something, again, very unique to Nottingham, and at times, through other, maybe ledge on the lot or some other reason why you might need to be less than 50, you might ask for a variance of that. But, I mean, in this particular case, I think I looked at the fact that, you know, we, the 50-foot has been around and it's been adhered to and very acceptable, and there has been many changes, as I use for examples, over the years, of this 30K, or this lot envelope. That's, seems to always be developing. So I thought, geez, I will stick with the 50-foot and ask for the relief of the 30K, partly because we don't have any intention of building a house up in that, in that narrow area. We've got plenty of room down below, and this way, it keeps the 50-foot, the separation that the town wants by that 50-foot side setback. So that's why we, we did consider other options, but chose this option because we felt it ended with a cleaner-looking lot and more in line with what the town overall, balancing out all of the rules and regulations, which might be more important than others. I'm sure they're all important, but if something had to look for relief, we looked at the 30K. So with that, I will certainly answer any questions.
Okay, do you have any, anybody have questions? Now, if you, I have just one. They talked about the hourglass, 44 feet wide, and, but I mean, if you could've got 50 feet, you would still have an hourglass, right? But it would still be 50, well, it'd be 50 feet wide.
50.1 or 50.1. I would've been, I would've had to smidge it like 50, a little over 50.
Right, but you'd, you'd still have that long skinny section, you're just asking for six feet of relief.
Yes, it would still look like an hourglass.
Yeah, it would still look like an hourglass.
But it wouldn't meet the definition, it would've, I could've made it 50.01.
Right.
And it would've met your definition if I had the wrong.
Right, but it would still look the same.
It would look the same.
Yeah.
And it would, practically speaking, it would, it would function the same, because you're talking about six feet. That's the, that's a deck or a set of stairs, but you could still fit a house up in there if you wanted it up there.
So what are the plans for that little panhandle?
There's nothing going there. So, it's, the house is gonna be down low where it's actually bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's on the, you threw it in there, right?
Yeah, it's shown on the topography map.
Yeah, so that's just kinda, just gonna be out-of-use space.
So how did it end up there? Looks like, you know, you've got the lot on the one side, the lot on the other side, then this little piece of land.
Uh, well, how did, how did I end up putting the lot line there?
Well, just...
To create the lot?
Yeah, like, okay, who owns that lot now? I mean, that, the little panhandle that we're talking about, it's like, it just seems like a funny piece of land to end up there between two other building lots. Lot 2 where the house is that your uncle is in, and then the other lot.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So that part, I mean, that, that piece that Peter took out is part of the whole lot, so that's...
Right.
That's owned by Dennis.
So that whole area was in that one lot?
Right, okay.
So that's all connected?
He's just subdividing that out, that chunk.
But there's Lot 24, right?
Yeah, that's a separate lot.
Right, and then there's Lot 2, and so, I was just curious how that piece of land wasn't incorporated into either one of those other two, because it would've made sense.
Well, it was, I mean, it was all part of the, it's all part of the 17 acres.
Yeah, it's all part of Lot, like Lot 2, so that's gonna be part of Lot 2-1.
Oh, okay.
So that, that drawn-out area is what's gonna be the buildable envelope right there.
All right, so it was a part of Lot 2, gotcha.
Yeah. Yes, this is a proposed subdivision. We haven't gone to the board yet, right? That may, okay, yeah, this does not exist.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I saw it.
Now I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, and if the lot, the lot, because it's in Aquifer District, they require an extra acre, because normally it's two acres, and if we were to make a two-acre, we wouldn't have needed to go up, well, I say from a density standpoint... Well, I say from a density standpoint, we wouldn't have gone up the hill. We probably would have needed to do this to get to 30,000 or close to it, yeah, so.
Now I understand.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, any other question, any? I just want to make a few comments that, you know, 90, 95% of our lots in Nottingham are probably created in open land. And not, most of the lots in Nottingham, the two-acre lots, are created in open land, so you don't have to work around an existing house and this and that.
Right, that's, that's correct.
So, so this lot, you know, has 17.1 acres. If it was vacant, you would have no trouble.
I would have done it no problem.
Yeah, if you had no house, you would have no problem.
That's right, Gary.
And the proposed lot has 3.1 acre, 31,000 fit for building. And it's some of the best land in Nottingham.
Really is.
The remaining lot has 14 acres, 58,000 feet. So I mean, it's, it's out of balance, but that's the way it ends up. But you still could not get three lots in there because of the, what you have for footage. So you're still going to get two lots.
Two lots.
That's it. And, and density-wise, that matches up. I mean, you've got 17 acres, so you're not...
Not asking for a lot.
The variance is mainly because of the house, the existing, where the house, and it's really only a corner of the house. It's not even the full house. So that's, that's where the hardship comes in, so. Okay, any other, any comments, any questions? Okay, so I'm going to close this hearing, and we'll go into our discussion and take a vote if we want. Okay, so I close the hearing. Let me see. Close the hearing on case 25006 of VA Brady, 28th case row. So that's closed, and we'll go into discussion and take a motion or whatever.
I don't want to talk about it.
Well, no, we'll discuss it. I was just saying, we'll discuss it, yeah. Nobody seemed to be discussing.
I know Pete explained it all very clearly, I thought, those times.
Yeah.
I would like to just make a point of clarification from the last meeting, based on minutes. My recommendation to you, Mr. Landry, was that the zoning board doesn't deal with the rules that people, the ordinances?
Why not?
That it's the planning board. They, the minutes suggest that, I said, the legislative body. And I may have said the DOS, but it's the planning board that writes the current articles that then go to the ballot for people to vote on. So that's where I, I think that you or somebody ought to start with for making some changes to ordinances that don't seem to make sense.
Again, we're here from a case by case, as I mentioned on yet, but if that's something you'd want me to get involved with, I certainly would volunteer. But I'd never, that was not my intention to come change anything. Certainly would like to change, but...
Well, that's what I, I gathered that from what you said.
If the planning board would like me to work with them, I'd certainly volunteer some time.
I don't, I don't know whether they would or wouldn't, but what I'm saying is that they were, they are the ones that I was recommending you go to, to initiate a change because we can't do anything about the angst that the zoning ordinance are causing you or other developers or builders.
I mean, it was interesting, the history, you said there used to be 60,000, which I remember. But you could go all the way out to the...
It never went to 60.
But you could go out to the lot line.
When it was 60, you could go to the lot line and to the edge of wet. Then the change was to put, to make it exclusive of the setbacks.
Yeah. But I mean, so they took an acre and a quarter of your land away from you, and only gave you, only shrunk the thing by half.
Yeah. They, they were the land within the setbacks.
Yeah.
And we actually went to the planning board last year even, and this would have, again, helped your case with this. But we talked about having the setbacks reduced, and we were shot down on it. They kept the 50. They decreased them for the non-conforming lots, but for the, all other lots, it stayed at 50 other than the, between the side and rear property lines and between side and rear property lines and septic. So the, the others are now the...
What I'm going to do is let them measure to the 20-foot setback.
But we, but again, you said, you know, the land being, not being used. We were agreeing on that. And we're like, people need more of their land to be able to use. And we see a lot of requests for relief in that respect. But I think until it comes from John Q. Public and not another board member, not much is going to happen.
Right. My experience is the last person they want to hear come in and help change regulations is a lands overseer.
You must have other people that you have influence with.
Send up my other people.
Just saying.
Yeah, no, I certainly would help the planning board. I do have ideas.
Well, they meet on the, the second and fourth Wednesday night at 6:00 now.
Oh, really? I like that.
Right, Alana?
6:00, that's good.
6:30? I sit corrected, 6:30.
Yeah, this is so confusing. Conservation is 6:00, planning is 6:30.
We're at 7:00.
We're still at 7:00.
It's because I'm on the board.
And you were still late, Monica.
Two minutes.
Two minutes, you weren't back.
If we weren't so far away, it would be one minute.
Yeah, I know, I know. If you could drive your car down the hallway, you could just get right on.
Blame the traffic.
Yeah.
Yeah, the traffic.
All right. Move that we approve, case 25006, as written.
Okay, you made the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve case 25006, the variance for Brady. So all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. No opposed?
Thank you.
You're all set? 30 days. You've been waiting a while.
30 days is nothing. We're waiting two days.
Well, here, wait's still not over. You still have to go before the planning board.
Well, that's true, yeah. You still got to go to the planning board. That's right. All right, so let's see.
Bye, take care.
We're done there.
Have to see one.
And we have, let's see, public comment. We have no public to comment, so. Other business, I just wanted to say Alana is leaving us, and that's something we'll...
Thank you for all your service, Alana.
Thank you for all your service. Thank you, great job.
Still see you in the tax clerk's office for some of the town clerks.
People will be bringing their cases into the town clerk's office. Okay, so is there any other business? Nothing, anything to report, or?
I have no updates either. Staff updates.
Any staff updates? Nothing, no, everybody?
We're taking a course tomorrow on zoning. I'll update you after I take it.
Okay, good. Alana, I know you're kind of not, not really here while you still are, but kind of not. Have you heard anything at all yet about the ADUs? Any of the, anything written for the boards to be able to go by, or is this...
Not yet.
Nothing, okay.
I think they're expecting...
July 1st?
I read, I read something that we're going to go, what, to 900 feet?
Right.
Instead of 750.
Yep.
Talk about detached.
Yep.
Detached, yeah, which way I have now.
It's, it's been passed, we're reading it to be signed.
And it doesn't have to be a relative?
Right.
Yeah.
No, of course not.
And they had the other one, at one point, they were going to allow... Who's on one lot, which way? I thought, wow, that might be a little overdone.
Might mean we might have legal ADUs now.
All right.
Okay, so now we have just a minute from 5:20. Did we all get the minutes?
I did, and that was my, my only recommendation, point of order on that.
Okay.
And that was for line 45 through 47.
Okay.
Point of order was, that was your, your comment.
Yeah, my comment. Move to approve the minutes as corrected.
Second.